Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, November 20th, 2023, and I would ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we roll into our holiday seasons in what is truly a very turbulent world, we are ever thankful for the many blessings that have been given upon the community of Batavia and who have had happiness and lack of description of any animosity where people get mad and start shooting each other or anything else. We are a very friendly and loving community, and we are thankful that we are here to live in this town. And I know all the members of the City Council join with me with the wish that as we roll into the holiday season, that utmost we remind ourselves of the fortunate world that we do live in here, and that we are here committed to continue to ensure that Batavia is a safe and friendly and understanding community regardless of people's race, religion, color, creed, or national origin. Tonight, we also want to send a special blessing for our members from the United States of America who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of our country and our nation, and I know that there are several members of the military delegations in the world that come out of Batavia and are part of the Batavia community. So we just ask that a special blessing be shined upon all the men and women who are serving so admirably in the defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And finally, we want to just ask for wisdom and understanding and true commitment on the parts of the City Council, which we know we have, in acting on the items of business before us, knowing that each and every one of those here is here to do what in their own hearts and minds is in the best interest of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings. Amen.
Alderman Sroh, you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, I'd ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Vacancy in Ward Seven. Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Peeper?
Here.
Chanset?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vocal singer? Vocal singer absent. Twelve present, one absent, one vacancy.
Oh, present, one absent, so we do have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, which is a reminder that if you're going to address the City Council tonight, from the audience, that you please come up and use the podium and the microphone because this is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the BATV, so we want to make sure people can hear what is being discussed and acted upon. Okay, moving to item five, which is items to be removed, added, or changed on our agenda. Do we have anything? I'm not aware of anything.
Yes, we have the addition of 9A.
9A, all right, that's going to be a report from Jerry Ruth from Trotter, who is going to provide some input on the wastewater treatment project's next phase, and so we'll ask him, and he'll give that after, before item 10, I guess it would be. All right, moving then to the presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Chanset, do you have this, that you can read it and present it?
Yes, indeed, Honored. The consent agenda reads as follows. To accept and place on file the billing reports for October 2023 are approvals. The November 9th, 2023 payroll in the amount of $1,076,736.93. The accounts payable check registered in the amount of $3,565,712.64. City Council minutes for November 6th, 2023. The Batavia Fire Pension Fund 2022 Municipal Compliance Report. The Batavia Fire Pension Fund 2022 Exhalerial Study. IDOI Exhalerial Report. And Batavia Fire Pension Fund for 2023 Tax Levy Request. The Batavia Police Pension Fund 2022 Municipal Compliance Report. Exhalerial Study and Tax Levy Request. Resolution 23-122-R for relation to bind insurance to property, liability, and excess workers' compensation. Resolution 23-119-R expressing official intent regarding certain capital expenditures to be reimbursed from proceeds from one or more obligations to be issued by the City of Batavia, Kane, and DuPage County, Illinois. Resolution 23-126-R approving task order number 22 with Trotter and Associates for preparation of phosphorus-removable feasibility study for amount not to exceed $21,300. Resolution 23-127-R approving a license agreement with C.C. Homes to the apartments for the water main repairs. Resolution 23-129-R approving a resolution for accepting a plat of dedication at the southwest corner of Wilson and Prairie Street intersection. Resolution 23-121-R approving task order number five with V3 for amount not to exceed $85,950 for preliminary and design engineering for safe routes to school projects along Public Road, Webster Street, and Robplane Street. Ordinance 23-57, that's amending the city code relating to water usage rates and service charges. Ordinance 23-56, amending the city code relating to sanitary sewer usage rates. Resolution 23-124-R reviewing a contract for legal services for traffic and ordinance violation prosecutions with Adrenall and Jensen's Law Group. Resolution 23-130-R authorizing an intergovernmental agreement participation in the MABUS Mutual Aid Box Alarm System. Resolution 23-125-R to request for extension of the expiration of the final plan for Deer Path and Main Consolidation Subdivision to variation on the subdivision regulations. Ordinance 23-61, annexing former railroad properties on Millie Drive and Newton Avenue. And finally, ordinance 23-58, that's a conditional use for motor veils, sales, and leasing new and used internet-based, 1805 Phelps. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chanset, Second Alderman Malay, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, one absent, one vacant.
Consent agenda is approved. Before we go, I'm going to just say something. Chief, do you have a copy of the oath of office?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I was worried that they were going to give it to me, and nobody put this in my packet, so as long as you got it, we're in good business. Okay, very good. Okay, moving to seven, which are matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Does anybody this evening wish to address this on any topic? Mr. Peoples, if you'd come up and use your microphone, please, and tell us your name and address for the record.
David Peoples, 525 North Avenue. I just got a couple little things I want to get clarified. I was told by the, I went to the Public Works, and they told me that the, in the spring of next year, they are going to put the sidewalk in on Republic Road from McKee, I think, to Maple Lane. Reason I'm here, I want to be sure that that's going to happen. I see by the resolution that they're having some kind of engineer and safe route for the school on Republic Road. Now, is this definite that it's going to go in? Because I've been trying to get that in there because at 3:30 and at 9 o'clock in the morning, it's a real pain there because somebody, the children, could get hurt. But is that definitely, that's a go, right?
Laura, you want to answer that?
Sure. At the committee of the whole meeting, Rahat Bari provided an update on that project, and the state has added new requirements that all, the entire route to the door of the school must also be accessible, and so we are engaging in the engineering study, and that will include analyzing whether further changes need to be made, further improvements need to be made to that route, and if so, then it would adjust the price of the implementation of that sidewalk. So it could be that it comes back and a different decision is made about moving forward with that, but at this point, the plan is to put that segment of sidewalk in there. But we've kind of had a change of the rules of the game happen midway through this safe routes to school program.
What does that safe route? I know, I know one thing, that if the school requests that, they can go over their head. Of course, the problem is money, so I mean...
Exactly.
But they told me at Public Works that this is a definite goal. Many years ago, they, the residents didn't want that, and so they got the aldermen to refuse it. I live on North Avenue. We had, it was so-so, and they put it in there because they want for the storm school for safety. This needs to be done. I walk around there, and they told me at Public Works it was a goal. So you're telling me now that it's iffy?
We just need to analyze it. At this point, the analysis has not been done to determine whether the full path from the end of the improvement to the door of the school is 100% accessible. So I can't tell you for certain today that it will be built, but so long as that is accessible, the plan is to move forward with this.
Well, that's why I come to the council meeting, to get the clarification on that, because they told me. Now, the final thing I'm going to ask you is, the sidewalk program, is the money there to do that?
The money was there.
And is it going to go to, from McKee to Maple, or is it going to stop on North Avenue?
I don't have those plans in front of me, but the segment of sidewalk has not changed. So one could look at the documents attached to this item at the committee of the whole meeting, the last committee of the whole meeting, and that will describe the segments of road that is being improved.
Okay.
And you asked the question, does the money exist?
When can I find out when this is go? Come in 2024, then? I got to come back to the meeting, or will the Public Works let me know?
I believe that it will be in 2024, but we can let you know.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then the only other point I had, the bag fee for the six cents that's coming here to the Batavia has, I tried to find out, what is that money going to be used for? Is that, I heard that it's going to be used for like the environment study, but my point being, if that can be used for something else, I would like to see, we've been here on this garbage pickup from Grody, there's a lot of senior citizens who can't not afford the $12.75 a month. Possibly, you could maybe use some of that money for those who couldn't afford it, to give them a little helping hand at this time. That's my only question. Has it been decided what that's going to be used for?
No.
No.
So when's that decision going to be made? And maybe you can take my suggestion.
May I come back to another meeting and state your position?
Okay, so that hasn't been, so, okay. Thank you, and thanks, go ahead. You requested whether the sidewalk is planned to go to North Avenue? I'm pretty sure it's going to go from McKee to Maple. Okay. Because that's where it's needed, to link up all the sidewalks. Yeah. I'm looking at the plans right now, and I just wanted to clarify that for you. Yeah. It is going up to Maple, yes. Right. Okay, one other thing, thanks for helping getting the piping done up in the north section, and everybody seems to be pretty happy. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Dave. Anybody else in the public? All right, moving then to item number eight, which is an oath of office for probationary police officer Andrew Jenzick, and I asked Chief Mazza to give us a brief introduction before we do the swearing in.
Hi, good evening, Council. I'd like to introduce you to Andrew Jenzick. He is our newest probationary police officer. Andrew is a certified law enforcement officer who joined our department on November 14th after nearly two years of experience with the Aurora University Police Department. Prior to working with Aurora University, Andrew worked for nearly two years as a Chicago police officer. He is a graduate of Wabonzi Valley High School in Aurora and has also attained a bachelor's of arts degree in general justice from Benedictine University in 2017. In 2020, Andrew passed his certification qualifying him to hold the position as a law enforcement officer through the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board. Officer Jenzick is currently assigned to the Field Training Division for 16 weeks of intensive training. I'm excited to have Andrew join our department, family, and we believe that his law enforcement experience and his employment background will allow him to make an immediate impact on the department and the community.
Andrew, we want to get you out here in the center of the circle. We'll get you on TV here, so they get to look at my back and your front. Okay, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
Hi, Andrew Jenzick.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
To the position of probationary police officer?
To the position of probationary police officer.
On November 14th, 2023?
On November 14th, 2023.
With the Batavia Police Department?
With the Batavia Police Department.
In the city of Batavia?
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage?
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear and affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of probationary police officer?
Of probationary police officer.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Welcome. I have to sign here. All right, moving then to item number nine, which is appointment of Reagan Bull and Joshua Einstein Curtis to the Batavia Active Transportation Advisory Commission for a three-year term. We've discussed this in committee. Does somebody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We approve the appointments.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf and Second Alderman Lehman for the approval of the appointments to the Batavia Active Transportation Advisory Commission for a three-year term. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Thank you. Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
I'm sorry, vocal singer?
Aye.
Thank you. Lancy, aye. Beck?
Aye.
Thank you. Peeper?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, no absent.
Motion's approved.
I believe both gentlemen are here tonight. If we wanted to have them come up and introduce themselves?
Sure. Could we have the two gentlemen who have just been appointed come up to the podium for just a second and tell us who you are, so we know you by face?
Your Honor, I'd also like to, if we can, invite the Active Transportation Committee to come to a committee of the whole meeting, so we can discuss with them, moving forward with either a subcommittee or part of that committee looking at the speed reduction for the city. That will also be a good idea for us to meet, especially if there's new members there, be able to talk about that.
Gentlemen, if you'd come up and introduce yourselves to us, please.
Hi, my name is Josh Einstein Curtis. I'm excited to be a relatively new resident of Batavia now, with a one-year-old living in the storm area on Van Norwick, and I think that the town has a lot going for it, and I'm really excited to see the strategic plan going forward, hopefully moving more towards, you know, pedestrian and bikes and trying to do more through building a community that's walkable and not just having cars go through every day. Thank you, I really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Regan Bull. I'm a 12-year resident now of Batavia. Me and my wife live also in the storm community over there by, where they're doing the sidewalk, actually. So I'm an avid bicyclist. I've known about the committee for years, and seeing that they transformed it into a new commission, I'm excited to be a part of it, and welcome the opportunity for the next three years. Thank you very much.
We thank you both for your willingness to step forward and serve, and you bring some backgrounds that I think will serve us very well in the days ahead. So hopefully, we've just enriched and enforced and strengthened the whole active transportation system by bringing you two guys on board, so thank you for your willingness to serve. Okay, the next one, I don't see anybody from...
Essentially, Jerry Ruth is next, 9A.
Yeah, we've got here the 75th consecutive year of the Batavia Toy Drive.
She's on Zoom.
She's on...
Zoom, yeah.
Zoom? Okay.
But where were you going to have Trotter?
We're going to do 9A first. Trotter's is first.
We're going to do Trotter's presentation first, okay. Jerry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Second one, I bring up.
There you go.
Oh, thank you.
And Jerry, can you share your screen for those online?
Sure. Okay. All right, so, as I said, my name is Jerry Ruth. I'm with Trotter and Associates. We've been working on the projects down at the wastewater treatment facility for a number of years now. If you were in town for the Phase One improvements that ended in 2019, this is the next stage or next phase of construction at the wastewater plant to make sure that the city is able to handle any development that comes our way. We are right on the cusp of requiring expansion, so there's a lot of pieces that need to be moved down at the plant. So what I'm going to talk about today is a brief history of the treatment facility. I'll try not to bore anybody, but if you really have questions and want to know about how we handle it here in Batavia, talk to me after the meeting, and my information is always available up on the website. So, real quick, the wastewater treatment in the city of Batavia. Originally constructed in 1939, what you see, the orange shapes there, sort of an overlay of how the site exists today, the orange shapes are, were part of an island that was in the middle of the Fox River. In the late 50s, that treatment capacity was expanded... In the late 50s, that treatment capacity was expanded to include chlorine for disinfection and a couple aeration basins beyond what they had initially. In the 70s, after the Clean Water Act was enacted, and there was an intermediate project to construct a clarifier that we don't have a whole lot of drawings on, but in the 70s, we constructed primary clarification, additional aeration basins, an excess flow clarifier, which is the sort of doughnut-shaped, large circular structure up at the north end of the site. An administration building was built, so at that project, we filled in the river that was going around the island of wastewater treatment. When I say "we," obviously, I don't mean me. In the late 80s, anaerobic digestion was brought to Batavia, as well as chlorine contact tanks for disinfection. The existing chlorine contact tank was repurposed, and a handful of other improvements were incorporated into the plant. In 1999, was the last expansion of the plant, brought us up to 4.2 MGD of treatment capacity on a design-average flow basis. We added a third final clarifier, extended aeration, and a fourth primary clarifier. In 2005, the city conducted a sanitary sewer evaluation survey, which is an SSES, and also had a plant evaluation done at that time. That's a citywide look at the collection system, as well as the treatment facility specifically. In 2008, the city conducted a wastewater master plan that put forth three alternatives for expansion, how to handle it. In 2012, we had another look into the treatment facility with, through the lens of those three alternatives, how to address aging equipment, how to rehabilitate it or replace it, how to address the capacity needs, both flow and load to the plant were right on the cusp of what we were designed for. And EPA regulations were coming down the road, things like phosphorus and nitrogen that we had to remove that we didn't have to previously, and how we were going to do that, either within the footprint of the existing facility property, or on the other two alternatives that were off-site. In 2013, we designed some critical rehabilitation that included primary clarifiers and diffuser membrane replacements, things that had been put off for a long time, but really needed to be handled before we did anything else to the plant, or else we wouldn't be able to meet our permit limits. And then, Phase One rehabilitation, that was in, from 2017 to 2019, that constructed the structures in blue on the screen now, which include the building that you see from the north, that's the main building, up at the north end, that has your sludge handling, maintenance garage, laboratory, administration. We also constructed the digister operations building, which provided for meeting code for handling digister gas, which the original design didn't, since it was done back in the late 80s. And since then, more regulations had come around about methane. Phase Two A, we were getting into the design of that in 2021. In 2022, we found that there was an issue with the excess flow clarifier. So to remind you, this is the big, yellow, circular, doughnut-shaped tank, was built in the 70s, we thought it was indestructible, and we found out that it was actually structurally failed. So we had to regroup, change our whole design, change the phased approach for the remaining phases of the project, and compile the Phase Two A project in a hurry. We got that done, the project bid, early in 2023, and I'll tell you a little bit about where we're at with it and what the project includes. So right now, what you'll see is the off-site improvements. Those will be going on until the spring. That includes underground sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, realignment of the bike path, demolition of several structures on the site, including the old food pantry building, a square sludge storage tank, and the excess flow clarifier, the big doughnut-shaped structure. We're also constructing a new headworks to replace the one that exists right now in the middle of the site, for a myriad of reasons. Same with the primary clarifiers. They'll be able to provide primary and excess flow clarification for the ultimate design of the treatment facility. Construction of a new primary clarifier control building, an excess flow diversion structure, and three raw sewage pump stations. Rehabilitation of the existing aeration basins to carry us through the next phase of construction, Phase Two B, where we expand the plant. Rehabilitation of the final clarifiers at the south end of the site, because those haven't been touched since 1999, and there are just some wear parts that we need to replace at this point that have just worn away after 20 some odd years of use. Constructed of a new UV disinfection building, again, one of the drivers of this project, the existing equipment was beyond its service life and is no longer being supported by the manufacturer, so we couldn't get spare parts, we couldn't get service, we couldn't get much of anything. And a lot of communities are facing that with this particular manufacturer. Finally, replacement of WAS thickening, one of the many processes in the plant has to do with how we handle our solids and the biomass that actually does the work of treating the wastewater, removing ammonia and BOD. So, an update for November, like I said, there's mostly off-site work going on right now, you're not going to see a whole lot of buildings coming out of the ground yet, we're doing all the infrastructure work first. So, in summary, the project is $42.6 million. On September 18th, that was the notice to proceed date, so that was the start of construction. Since then, the contractor has mobilized equipment and staff to the site, they've begun the off-site utility work. Mostly that is included installing water main on Water Street, and digging up and installing some sanitary sewer that's going to be going on through the winter, down Water Street from Main to Union. Also, structure demolition has started, we have removed the food pantry building that was at the west end of Flynn Street, and we're continuing on with the square storage tank probably here in the next month or so. So just some photos of the work that we've been doing, structure demolition, there's a picture of the building that was and the ground that is there now. That will be the site of the new headworks facility, located right at the corner of Flynn. We put up the traffic detours, again, something that everybody will see and notice is the vehicle and pedestrian traffic detours that we put around the work to keep pedestrians and vehicles safe. There's been excavation and potholing all down Water Street, this is at the intersection of Water and Main Street. There's been tree removal, the bike path is going, right now, it's currently in the picture on the left, is a shared path of travel with Pomarco Drive, there's a lot of vehicle traffic goes through there that is semi-trailers and also normal cars, but it's a shared path of travel, so we are, as part of our improvement, separating the bike path from the road, creating a safer path of travel for all bicyclists on the west side path. They directional drilled most of the water main on Water Street, but they ran into some issues with cobbles and sandy soils, so they ended up open cutting a lot of it. Now, cost update, so at this point, engineering invoices and construction pay requests that was just submitted last week, totaling just over $2 million. Estimated progress, and that's based on days remaining of the project, that's not necessarily the contractor's opinion of it, but we're at 9% completion. No change orders on the docket yet. I might have a change order next time I present to you, because that might be in January because of the holidays. Now, for a schedule, and this is fluid, as with any long construction project, this project is going to last 34 months, so it's going to be a long one. ITC submitted their draft schedule in September, if I can, here we go, 26th. We sent comments back, they sent back a revised schedule, and these are the dates that they are at right now with their critical path of activities. So, off-site utilities will be done, done, in June of '24. Complete the new UV building that has a early milestone, so that the city can get off of using their existing equipment and get on to using the new equipment in October of next year. The headworks will be done in February of 2026, longer timeframe for construction, same with the primary clarifiers. That's sort of when all the large aspects of the project come together, near the end. And that's my presentation for the project. I covered a lot of ground, I'm going to be back, but if there are any questions, I open the floor.
Anybody have any questions, Jerry?
No, no real questions, just a comment. I have both my daughter and friend that live on that street, so I'm intimately aware of the construction schedule and what's going on over there, and everybody's been just great. So, just to pass that along, the contractors have been really good with driveway access, water on and off, all the things that they have to deal with on that street for, you know, the next year.
Glad to hear it, I'll let them know, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
On that note, I know the off-site utility work should be done by June, but how much of the more disruptive aspects of that, does that have a near-term, a closer-term end date? As in, working with the sewer's access on there, I know some folks on that street, as you suggested, have had, you know, good interactions with our contractors, but just like, how, primary disruptions, does that have a timeline?
Property disruptions are going to be sequential, so as they're going down from Main Street to Union, they're digging 20 feet down, partially into bedrock, and installing a large diameter pipe. As they cross the water services and the sewer laterals, they're tying those in as they go.
Yeah.
So it'll be fairly quick for the people at the north end, at the south end, eventually they'll get to them.
It'll be rolling through to June.
Oh, yes.
Oh, very good to know, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? I just might share with the council that I think this thing is, Trotter's building has become recognized as kind of a regional model of how to do it the right way, and to the degree that I've been contacted by several other cities, want to bring their city councils over to Batavia some day or night, or whenever we can arrange this and take a little bit of a tour to see what's being done, how it's being done, and how it comes into play, because there's some others that probably need to do this a lot worse than we do, but we seem to be kind of at the head of the game here, so I'm kind of proud of that fact that we've got this as far along as we have, and that we're, with the growth that we now are starting to experience in the community, it's good to have this already somewhat online, so I appreciate all the good efforts you're doing.
Thank you.
And I may be calling you to give a couple tours for city councils that want to come in and look at, who would have thought people want to come and look at your sewer plant, but given the amount of money and the new technologies that are new, now emerging, and how things are being done, a lot of towns have some pretty interesting curiosity, and some of them I don't think have much of a sewer plant at this point in time, and we're kind of setting the stage for the way to do it. So I'm proud of Batavia and Trotter for kind of putting us into that position, so, thank you.
Um, anytime you need me to give the tour, you let me know.
Okay.
I stop to share?
Yes, please.
Yep.
Is Brittany?
Yes, Brittany is online.
Brittany, are you on the line here?
Sure am, hopefully you guys can hear us.
Yep, if you'd go ahead and give us your presentation, we're all excited about all the good things that you once again are going to do in Batavia this Christmas.
Yeah, so we are 19 days away from our big day. Currently, we have about 100 families that we'll be helping, we're still collecting names from the food pantry and clothes closet, so we expect that number to still go up a little bit, our letters will be sent out next week, but as you guys know down there, we never have a family that doesn't have Christmas in Batavia. We drop stuff off Christmas Eve if we need to. We've got a lot of places collecting for us this year, we've got Batavia Parcel, Diaddio's, Gammon Coach House, Carl's Complete Auto, the library, the schools, both firehouses, and then the police station also takes our gift cards and any money or checks. So, we also are going to show you kind of what each family would get, so each kid is going to get a small gift, which is about $30 to $40 in value. They'll get a large gift, it's about $75 worth of value. They will also get a hat and gloves. Each child also gets a book and a puzzle. They also get a game. They get a stuffed animal, and each family gets a ball. So each kid in Batavia gets one of those.
I like your elves.
Yes, my elves are great. So, yeah, we really appreciate, this does not happen without the community. You know, we say once a bulldog, always a bulldog, but Batavia always comes through. You know, I remember years of, when I was little, and my grandma running around and saying, I don't know about how it's going to happen, it's not, I don't know how it's going to happen, it always, it always happens, you know, the city really comes through, and we have great donors and Aldi and Target as well, but like I said, this doesn't happen without the city, so we are grateful to you guys, we're grateful to the police that come and help us the day of, the students from the high school that come and help us, and all of the donations that we get, it doesn't happen without the community. So, our greatest needs this year are the kids that are 10 and up, with hats, gloves, games, books, puzzles, and if we get gift cards, we prefer that they're in small denominations, because then we can add them to other things to get them to that $30 value or to that $75 value.
So, does anybody in the council have any questions, Brittany? Well, let me just say that Brittany comes from a long line of people who have kept this thing really moving, from the days when the fire department used to repair broken toys, and they were then distributed by the Rotary on the 23rd of December to houses that had been identified where there is need. And as she's already mentioned, she had a grandmother by the name of Mildred Bailey, and if there was ever hellfire and brimstone in this whole project, it was Mother Bailey, because she made the world understand that we needed to do this, and this was a great thing and a good thing to do. And I'll never forget the personal experience I had with Mother Bailey on the weekend of Thanksgiving of, I don't know what year it was, 30 years ago now, maybe, Mother Bailey's house caught on fire. And it was a Sunday night, and she lived up in the 500 block of Douglas Road, so I responded up there, and I was then the mayor, but I still, as you know, I kind of tried to be the fire department photographer, so I went up there to take some pictures, and I get out in front of the house, and here comes Mother Bailey out the door. Now, Mother Bailey knew me from when I was in school with her son, and she let me know she was my second mother, and so I knew that from a long way back. But she comes running out the house, and she says to me, Jeffrey, the list of the kids that are going to get the toys is in the kitchen, and that kitchen's on fire, and somebody's got to get in there and get those, get that list for me. And so, with the aid of a couple of Batavia firemen, we went to the back door, got the door open, and we got Mother Bailey her list. And we brought that out, and she stood there and just cried her eyes out that she had her list back, because she then knew that she was going to be able to do Christmas. Now, that's the whole background story of this thing, and it's kind of a nice story if you think about it as it all came together, because it was a tragic event about to happen, but Mother Bailey wasn't going to let that stand in the way. And so, as I remember, we were just starting to buy the Batavia Fire Department face masks with bottles on them, and the chief had a couple of the boys put those on, and I stood down in the bottom of the doorway as they went in, and I kind of knew where this was, and I pointed it out to them, and they went in and got that list, and were back out the door in about five seconds, but we did get Mother Bailey taken care of. So that's the spirit of this project and how it goes forward. So, again, I publicly want to thank the Bailey family and all those who joined with them, and they've got this down to a science, and they got big help on the day of distribution, because we have the Batavia police come out in uniform and stand there and make sure everybody wants to do it the right way, because, again, we've had some folks go out there and want to get smart with us and push things around and whatever, but when they get greeted by three uniformed police officers at the gate, everybody seems to calm down and to the credit of the Batavia Police Department, that's just another factor of this thing that we keep it going. So, I certainly would encourage, if any of the council would like to go out a few days before the distribution, and see what's going on, it's all out there at the old Sam's Club Building on the south side of the building, and the Baileys are generally there, and I'm sure if you go tell them who you are, they'll give you a quick tour rundown of how it works, and they'll have a lot of these projects that she's just pointed out, all packed up ready to go, and all people have to do is drive up and get their pack, tell them who you're, what your number is, and get your package, and away they go. So we got this down to a science, and something I'm very proud of at Batavia, and specifically the Bailey family for really driving this thing in the high end it's gotten to be, because as time's going on, we've had seemingly more and more kids that need it than we had previously. So, we make this a nice Christmas for a whole bunch of needy people. So we make this a nice Christmas for a whole bunch of needy people. So thank you, Brittany and your family.
Thank you.
Day of the distribution, so we...
What's the date? Brittany, what's the date of the distribution?
December 10th is our first giveaway, and then we, we'll do it again on the Wednesday for families that can't make it.
Would you like to come down on the 4th and pick up the donations from the council?
Sure.
On the night of the 4th? We usually would bring whatever we get together down here. And my little story of it, as I always use, this was a great teaching thing for me with my kids, was take them out, let them pick out things they wanted, and then give those away.
Sounds great.
Council toy distributor gathering here or the next council meeting.
Yep. We'll keep the tradition going.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for your update.
Thank you.
Keep up the great work. Appreciate it. All right. Moving forward is Batavia Main Street. And we're honored to have the executive director here with us.
Hi. I'm going to start with talking about the indoor market. We're up and running over at the Dock, which is 151st Street. We've got a great group of vendors this year. We're going to feature about 20 every week. And then starting in December, December 2nd, we're going to be moving over to Grainology Brew Stillery, so they'll be hosting the market for the rest of the season, which is a nice thing because at the Dock, it's not ADA accessible, so they're going to, we're going to have accessibility there. So we're excited about that. Today, we sent out an email to release our holiday gift guide, which is kind of our shop small promotion for this year. It features 24 different businesses with eight different gift categories and just reminds people that there's a lot of great shopping to be done downtown. So the PDF is on our Linktree, and it was sent out in our email. The social media post will go out tomorrow. Last week, Kristin and I went to the Illinois Main Street Conference. We received Lieutenant Governor Award for Excellence for our promotions approach. We increased our merchant engagement with some flyers we created this year, so that was a positive. And Suzie Ray won an Outstanding Volunteer of the Year, so we were excited about that. It was a good time. We also did a presentation on the Boardwalk shops called If You Build It, Will They Come? Creating a successful incubator space. So thank you to the city for being so supportive of this project. We are basically the envy of other Main Street organizations and other downtown communities that our incubator has been so successful, and I think that is a testament to the support of the city and the work that we put into it. So it was really well received. We had great feedback, and again, thank you. Other Boardwalk shop news, we have our first tenant who will be leaving early from Boardwalk Shops, More Polish Pottery, has decided that the traffic doesn't justify them being there any longer, especially since they also are over at the Aurora Kris Kringle Market. So they left today, but we have filled the shop, so for the remaining four weeks, we'll just have it as a pop-up shop. So those vendors are super excited to take advantage of the space at this time of year. House of 423 has left downtown Batavia, and we have three of our current Boardwalk Shop tenants signed by Crystals, Curious Soap, and Gather Bakery, who will be teaming up to open a little gift shop there. So we're really excited to have another group going into brick and mortar. So that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Could you, when you began, you described where this, the shop is going to be moved to a reopening, the one that, I guess, over at First and Water Street? Is that where it is?
Indoor market.
Yeah, the indoor market.
The indoor market is currently at the Dock, which is 151st Street, but it's going to be going to Grainology Brew Stillery, which is 131 Flynn Street, Unit C. It's, we're really excited to get in and have some more space there.
131 Flynn Street, did you say?
Yes.
So that's down there right by the water treatment plant?
Correct.
Because I've had two different people come into the building today asking me where that's going to be. They can't quite figure that out in their mind as to where that's going to be. So...
Well, we will have directional signage in front of the Dock, kind of pointing down.
I was going to suggest that because there's a lot, these were all older people, and they just couldn't figure out where it was you were moving this to, and they liked the facility, and they go every week, but they were afraid they couldn't find it the next time they went. So that will be...
And in the newsletter, in the week, the week of the move, we will have a map showing the new location as well as on our social media.
I got a guy meeting me at McDonald's on Wednesday morning, and the reason he's coming down is for me to tell him where this is at. It shows you how...
Oh, boy.
How extreme this is. Yeah, how this gets going.
To have dedicated customers.
Right. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Keep up the great job. Okay, moving to item 12, which is ordinance 23-42, amending the City of Batavia Code Title 11 for the establishment of a tree commission regu- for the establishment of tree commission regulations. Scott, you going to handle this?
Yes. So we had talked about this at the last city council meeting. We had some concerns raised from an individual about some of the language in regards to the tree ordinance, and we did make revisions to the ordinance that's been presented to you tonight. So we did have some language that was added regarding certified arborist. We changed the definition there, and then we also made more clear language about modification of a tree preservation plan so that that's clear that we can do that. There was subsequent commentary made that we received late last week regarding several other things. We did respond to those concerns and questions that they had. Most of those things really relate to more landscaping plans that are really covered in the zoning code as well as the development ordinances that are in the city. So if there are some, you know, things that haven't been addressed, you know, we could certainly go back and, you know, revise this ordinance, you know, at some point in time. But our recommendation at this point is to go ahead and approve the ordinance, and if there's additional things that need to be changed, we can certainly, you know, consider those at a future date. Considering that some of them might be municipal code changes and in particular subdivision or zoning code changes, those are required to go to a public hearing in front of the Plan Commission. We have to publish for it and everything else. So that would take additional time to go through that process to do those amendments. So we're not opposed to, you know, considering further things, but we do think it's important to get a tree preservation ordinance in place now so that we can make sure that we're covering ourselves, and we can always amend it later.
After, excuse me, I think after it's implemented too, if we find that there's issues with it, then that's the right time to change those. You know, if we feel like it doesn't apply, or if it's covered in zoning or you with it there.
Or something. Right. Yep.
I had mentioned when we talked about this first time, the increase in the penalty, is that what that 2250 per day is too?
That's correct. Yes.
The only thing I don't like about that is like per lot. So, I mean, it's...
Let the city attorney address that, that particular issue, because it basically was a tri- it was a triple penalty based on what we can, what we can impose. So that, that number was, we came, we came out of the city attorney's office.
Okay. But if somebody like removed three on a lot that shouldn't have been removed, then...
And it's per day. That's per day per violation. So...
So then how do they remediate that violation?
When they plan trees.
Okay. Thank you.
That could be substantive.
Any other questions?
I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2342, amending the City of Batavia subdivision code, Title 11 of the City Code, establishing a tree preservation regulations.
Second. Move by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Malay, for the approval of ordinance 2342, establishing tree preservation regulations. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Deeper?
Aye.
Chantet? 13 yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. All right. Moving to item 13, which is ordinance 2359, conditional use permit for a video gaming establishment in the DMU Downtown Mixed Use District for an overflow location at 144 West Wilson Street. Who's got this one? Alderman Wolf?
Yes, we discussed this at the committee level, and it came out with a positive recommendation to the council. We did try to separate other issues that we have away from the actual vote on this. So I appreciate everybody's willingness to listen to each other, talk about their perspectives on this. So that being said, I think this is a great thing for the, the business that's already there, this new business that's going to start. And I kind of like the concept of an overflow from one, one place to another. I think it's a neat idea. So with that being said, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2359, conditional use permit for a video gaming establishment in the Downtown Mixed Use District for overflow at 144 West Wilson Street.
Move by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Sulfah, for the approval of ordinance 2359. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
No.
Euer?
No.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Deeper?
No.
Chantet?
Aye.
Nine yes, four no. None absent.
Motion's approved. All right. Moving to 14, Administrator's Report. Laura?
Good evening. I have a couple of things that I wanted to share with you this evening. One is the downtown plan. We're having a community open house, and it's to introduce the draft Batavia downtown plan and to gain the public's insights about key topic areas, areas and proposed future developments in our downtown. The date of that is going to be on November 30th. It will be from 6:30 to 8:30 PM here at Batavia City Hall in the council chambers. And you can check out the project website at hla.fyi/downtownbatavia. That's hla.fyi/downtownbatavia. And if you have any questions about the plan or getting involved, you can contact Drew Rackow, our Planning and Zoning Officer. His phone number is 630-454-2707, or his email address is drackow@bataviaillinois.gov. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is that the police department will be participating in the Kane County State's Attorney's Office No Refusal Anti-DUI Initiative this Wednesday night into Thursday morning. Drunk driving crashes are responsible for over 10,000 deaths per year. The Batavia Police Department reminds the public to be responsible and use alternative transportation options such as designated drivers, taxis, or rideshare companies. In other matters, staff continues to review applications for the Building Inspector, Plan Reviewer, and part-time administrator, administrative assistant positions in community and economic development. And they are also continuing to look at the proposals that we received for South River Street Corridor Plan. They're narrowing down the proposals for further interviews and consideration. This past Friday, the mayor and Chief Maza were at Holy Cross Church, and they spoke with a small group of senior citizens about trends in financial scams and how do I avoid the red flags, I'm sorry, identify the red flags to avoid being victimized. Some may be wondering why there are still covers on the pedestrian buttons at River Street and Wilson Street, and the reason is that the city is waiting for final IDOT approvals that are necessary before we can activate those new pedestrian crossing signals. And then also, next Tuesday will be, the committee of the whole will be considering moving the budget to the city council for approval on December 4th. We will be, actually, we published last Friday, Friday, a black box tax notice notifying of a tax increase greater than 5%. And also that there will be a public hearing on November 28th. While the, the tax increase is greater than 5%, the rate for any given taxpayer will not change. It's just that there was that increase in equalized assessed value that resulted in an increase of more than 5% is why we had to publish that notice. But again, the rate is expected to stay the same or be lower than this year. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me. Yes, Alderman Lehman?
Thanks, Laura, for mentioning those pedestrian signals at Route 25 and Wilson. I know I personally noticed that, crossing the street and others also. A question, though, the traffic signal at that same intersection, has that been impacted or changed at all?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. I was just curious, because it feels like the traffic backup has been a little bit more significant recently. Somebody who spends a lot of time downtown, just something I feel like I've observed, and I was curious if the signals had changed at all.
I'll follow up on that, but to my knowledge, they haven't. The timing, yeah.
Right now, since the buttons don't work on South River Street, is there a pre-programmed cycle for walking, or is it just...
Yes, it would, it would just stick to the pre-programmed cycle, is my understanding.
But I mean, the signs don't flash up saying you can walk, right?
I'm not sure. I'll have to follow up on that and, and get back to you.
I mean, it's...
Mm-hmm.
Trying to walk. Not really sure what to do.
Okay. I'll, I'll ask if they are pre-programmed or if they're just not functioning until we are able to get this IDOT review. Alderman Wolf?
I believe it's going to be on our next council meeting, is the Seventh Ward Alderman.
Yes.
Replacement, the applications.
Yes, we've received four applications for the Seventh Ward Alderman. And on the agenda for next Tuesday will be interviews of each of those candidates and then selection process as we ordinarily do.
And we had a cutoff date for that. Is that this Friday?
The cutoff was today.
Was today? Okay.
Yes, end of business.
Then can you send those applications out to the council?
They're going out tomorrow morning.
We'll be able to approve those. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have other business from the city council? Alderman?
Yeah, I just want to point out that I have received several complaints about the fact that there's going to be no more leaf pickup on the east side, despite the fact that a lot of trees were just dropping today. I mean, there's a whole ton of people who already have their leaves out on the curb. I don't know how motivated they're going to be to put it in bags. And I would think that the city should probably make every effort to do another leaf collection on the east side, because the first two leaf collections in October, there were no leaves out there, because nothing had fallen yet.
It will be weather dependent, whether there would be an additional leaf pickup. So I can't 100% commit because this, it's the same equipment that does leaf pickup that we then have to turn over to do snow plowing. And so it's always very interesting, you know, each year the leaves fall at kind of a different rate. Some years really early, other years, they like hang on until, till the very end. So we'll do our very best to get this town as, as clean as possible, but it's always a difficult position for the Streets Department to try to weigh and balance all of those issues. Thus far, the weather is looking like we may be able to. Yes?
I just also want to say thank you to the Street Department, because they were out early Saturday morning in our neighborhood. Kind, it caught me by surprise, but I was appreciative that they were out on their weekend doing that.
Yeah, they've worked two Saturdays to try to, you know, stay on top of it, and thus far, they are like on top of their schedule, which is great. So we'll do our very best. Also, Alderman Baron, you have your hand up?
Yes. Thanks, Laura. So as it talk, as it was indicated in the letter that was sent, I did attend the presentation on the coal plant. And one thing that I would like to maybe have a discussion, hopefully another Alderman would join me in really promoting this discussion, is I, I feel that at this point, we know that Prairie State is going to be closing, and we have not done anything to really address how we're going to start planning for this, whether, you know, it really comes down as, Alderman Euer would say, you know, what are we doing to save money to prepare for this? And so in the first quarter of 2024, I would like to have a discussion... know, it really comes down as Alderman Euer would say, you know, what are we doing to save money to prepare for this? And so in the first quarter of 2024, I would like to have a discussion at Cal where we bring together not only the environmental commission, but also some outside interest people to have a discussion of what we're really going to do to plan for Prairie State's closing. Some of what I would like to see to help with this discussion, you know, I know that right now we're using about 48 of our 55 megawatts. I'd like to see a graph of how that's kind of grown over the years and where we might be able to predict where we might have to start looking for another source to help guide this. Additionally, I know that we haven't talked about any electric rates in many years. I'd like to see what the very minimal for next year's budget, which would be 2025's budget since we are out of 2024, what that might look like if we implement a small budget that starts going towards the future of Batavia's electric. And what that would look like and, you know, does this increase kind of coincide to when we may need to consider other sources until our contract runs out? So if another Alderman, older person would be willing to join me with this discussion, I greatly appreciate it.
I will.
I would.
Yeah, and I think that this is something, you know, we've anticipated this, I think, from the beginning, that at some point there has to be an exit strategy from the coal plant and whatever the cleanup costs are. And I'm not positive, but I believe that was part of the plan where the bonds were paid off at a certain point and then that money that was being used to pay the bonds off started to be diverted to being used to close the plant. And whatever cleanup costs or closing costs would be out of that same revenue stream. I'd have to go back and look at every detail on it, but yes, that's something we definitely need to talk about. And I don't know that we're that close to worrying about when we have to go out to the market to buy power. I mean, that's probably at least five or 10 years out before we use up that. Because I don't know that we've actually increased the amount of usage we've had. I think we've actually gone down in the recent past because of conservation and just less industry in town, less.
And we had one large user leave in 2014, I believe.
Right. So there are things, but it would be a good idea to get this out in front of us again and talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, I think one thing, you know, we've talked about is one of the initiatives is, you know, really, we can't do anything about our electric right now and where we're purchasing it. But if we can encourage our residents to begin switching over to electric, that might help some of the increase, you know, using up some of the electric that we have. I just think that it's something that we just need to start discussing. And maybe this is something that we discuss on a quarterly basis as we learn more and more. But I'm a very visual person and that's why I'm asking for the graph to see how it's kind of, you know, the even flow of it and what that potentially might mean into the future.
And one thing I would add to the conversations, I've been talked to by several of the existing gas station owners in Batavia. And they're curious to know as to what changes we may make in our city ordinances relative to the inclusion of gas charging facilities or electrical charging facilities at a gas station. And I guess it's not easily done. You're going to have to have some separations and a bunch of other stuff done.
It would be technically really interesting to see.
Well, I'm just saying.
How you would do it.
Right. But that's a question that's now being asked because apparently we have, some folks have already bought electric cars. And then the other side of the coin is, I was at a meeting in Chicago and the question got raised, what are we going to do for supply of electricity when every night everybody goes home and plugs their car into the wall and starts, you know, we probably, the end of the conversation was, we need to talk about having some more nuclear reactors added to the system because you're going to need that supply.
June, July, and August will be interesting.
Right. Well, I'm just saying that that's another question that is probably years away from being answered. But they're kicking that one around because you've got, you know, all these big, you know, there's buses now being bought for millions of dollars and all kinds of stuff that are all going to be electric charged. And you're going to have to have an electric supply to put all that out there on the street. So there's some real changes. And, you know, I think a lot of people are pointing at the state senator, our US senators and our governors and state legislature as to what's the only plan for, you know, 10 years from now as far as supplying electric energy to the regions.
New Jersey just passed 2035. Can't sell anything but an electric car in New Jersey.
I mean, that may be coming. I'm just saying that there's going to, if you think about it, everybody in Batavia goes home at night and plugs their car into the wall, that's going to be one heck of a demand on our electric system.
Potentially, I was going to say potentially that depending on how the consumer electronic side of it progresses, that can be mitigated by scheduled charging. In other words, the cars would be programmed to charge later in the evening potentially when the demand is lower. That would especially be more common if something like peak demand pricing were implemented where electricity costs are lower when the demand on the grid is very low to encourage people. It is in some places. Don't think we have that though, do we?
That's how we charge our electric car.
Yeah, oh, but the timing system.
On the timing system.
Yeah, yeah. So that's already in a lot of cars. That will help mitigate a bit. And theoretically, having electric cars with their batteries throughout the grid could even be used for grid stabilization somewhat since it is, if it goes back and forth.
We're a long way away from that to be able to do that.
I'm talking very.
I mean, you can still plug your Ford truck and run stuff at your house, but you're not going to be able to backfeed the grid yet.
Yeah, not safely. I'm just, more theoretically speaking, it provides a lot of challenges, but also opportunities. So.
I'm not arguing any of that. I'm just saying that there's a lot of questions in the next 10 years as to how this thing is going to be put together and working, you know, and maybe there'll be some inventions that'll generate more electricity in a faster realm than they currently are as far as the recharging goes. I mean, there's a lot of different things that are out there. But we, as a society, I mean, the question just came up was, if I was an existing gas station owner and I wanted to put some electric charging stations over in one corner of my area, do I have a zoning issue or can I do it? Or I don't think we, that's not in our ordinance as far as I can.
Well, in the state, fire marshal still has, you know, lords over the property anyway. So that'll be one hurdle to jump through.
There's a lot of questions that need to be answered and they're starting to be asked.
And I think Alderman Baron brings up a really good point that we do need to, all these questions are out there and we don't have the answers for them yet. So it is a good thing that we talk about it.
Oh, I'm all for it. I think we should be talking about it. But it's just, okay, anybody else in the council thing wanting to bring up? I just got a couple of comments I'd like to make. Number one, Batavia again this year is all, the community all fired up about its high school sports program. And that kind of gets further enhanced by the dynamic team of TV announcers we have in Mr. Lundberg and Mr. Wolf. And they are really, I had calls two weeks ago when it got announced that Lundberg and Wolf wouldn't be broadcasting any games anymore. And people wanted to make donations to POTS to be able to keep them on the air and all this other good stuff. And, you know, then it became, well, what stations are these going to be on? Am I going to be able to get this on my regular TV? So then we had to go through this CU on 26 thing that we got. And I think most people probably somehow did get on to see the game. But it was, it's an issue that I think we as a community and specifically the school district needs to continue to watch over itself because this is getting to be more and more a commonality in a town where we now have six senior living communities. I got to tell you, there's a lot of fans in those six living communities that watch those Batavia games. And I don't know what we're doing about the basketball season.
We're working on that right now. We have to figure out if we can, if we'll be able to allow to rebroadcast on VATV. There'll be kids that are doing it that they also work alongside us on the football season. And they do broadcast through a school-supported service called Huddle. And basically, it's a sharing service between schools so they can scout each other legally and get, you know, film from other teams. And then the teams also use that to learn from and teach from. So we're going to try and see if we can figure a way that we can allow, you know, they're going to do the games during basketball. And I believe they're going to do both the boys' and the girls' games. So there's a lot of content there that if we can get the okay to do it, we'll put it on VATV to try to expand their realm. So that way it'll be a simpler thing to get a hold of. But thank you for your kind words. It's a lot of fun. I really enjoy it.
You've got a big fan club out there as far as people that.
We had several games over 1,000 views at one time.
Right.
Usually up till about the third quarter of most games. And it's amazing to me too, if we miss the band, if we miss the dance team or anything else, that's a big no-no. So we've really gotten pretty good at making sure that those stay on during halftime and everybody gets to see what they want to see.
A lot of grandparents and other folks out there.
All over the world. The guy sitting right out there was on either side of the country for two weeks, two weeks apart to see the games. We had people in Italy, Hawaii. I mean, it's everywhere.
I had a guy that just moved into the homestead tell me that he'd never been to Batavia before till a year and a half ago. And now he's become one of the biggest fans of the high school teams and he watches every game faithfully and he knows the players and he knows their uniforms. And there's a gang up there that, man, they're really into this. But they can do it in the comfort of their living quarters or wherever they're doing up there. But they're all watching it. So it's a, you've got a big.
And I will say, the business community in town has really picked up on this because it's, every bar, every restaurant had at least one TV with it on. So it's good for business. And yes, thank you very much to our sponsors all throughout the season and especially when we get to the playoffs.
Next thing I'd like to do is just say a word of commendation and thanks to both the Batavia Police and Fire Departments. Most of you don't know, but the last couple of weeks, they've been tried to the brim as far as the number of calls and the differentiations of calls that they've had. And I would just share with you the experience I had on Saturday morning. I went out to Batavia High School to help facilitate the escorting of the fire and police department, taking the team out Main Street to Randall Road and then going down to Orchard where they stopped and let the team go on and get on the expressway, but it was kind of an out of town, good luck type of a thing. And I don't know how many, a couple hundred cars I think were out there in line behind them and the fire department turned around. But before the fire and police could get going, all of a sudden their radios go off. And they got some really serious stuff going on that they had to take a couple pieces of equipment that we're going to do it and divert that immediately and get some other stuff. You know, we're fortunate, we got backup equipment in both fire stations that we can activate very quickly and do stuff like this. But they were getting ready to pull the bus out of the school grounds and we get a call that a car just driven through the doctor's office up at Campana and the people were still in the car in this crashed car at the back of Campana. And so that diverted a whole bunch of our folks, rightfully so, had to go off to that. But within a minute and a half, the fire department was there with another vehicle and just took over and did everything as if nothing had ever happened. So, and the same with the police. The police department has just been overwhelmed with unique calls and most of them I can't sit here and talk about. But I mean, we've had several death situations. We've had all kinds of people mentally go off on us. And it's been a real trying time for both of those agencies. And they find themselves having to work together quite a bit, specifically when you have to merge the fire, the ambulance, and the police together because those two have to work together with some great regularity. And so we've had our fair share of that. The other one I want to thank, some nice words, is to our public works department. And many of you probably have noticed the last couple of days, they've been on the streets of Batavia with their booms in the air, hanging Christmas lights and doing everything ready. And so that leads me to this coming weekend. And it sounds, I'm not sure we know yet exactly how it's all going to time out, but I would suggest that from probably 3 o'clock till 6 o'clock, right around here, we got all kinds of things, including the dedication of the new bridge lights on the bike bridge. And we've got a band concert that's being put on by the Batavia Community Band with holiday music. And we've got, you know, some other things that are going to happen. And we will, I think, have a lot of people down here wandering around. And of course, one of the big events is at the end when Santa Claus arrives. And then we have a whole bunch of people. And so we've got a lot of people that are very excited about stuff. And so we haven't finalized a lot of stuff yet, but there's more to come, I think. And Sunday afternoon ought to be a real nice time for Batavians to have in their downtown and stay with it. And one final thing I'd like to just share with you, it's, I look upon it as kind of a sad piece of news, but I was told on Thursday that we are losing our longest standing retail operation in downtown Batavia. And that's Olmsted's TV store. And they, Gene, who was, his father opened the business in the early 1940s when TVs were just being invented. And he ran it till Gene got old enough to come into it. And then Gene took it over. And as you may know, if you've ever bought a TV from them, you buy the TV, but then they bring it to your house and then they set it up and wire it up and get you all, so they got a big fan club with that going. But I think Gene's plan is he's going to retire and he's going to close the store and probably December will be about the end of their store. So if you need to buy a TV, it may be the time to run up there and grab one. I'm sure they'll be gone pretty quick. And told me within today or tomorrow, he's putting signs on the front window that will announce this. But I thought the council should know it at a time because I believe they can say that they've been in business 80 years. And in 80 years, there aren't many other retail businesses in the history of Batavia that have lasted 80 years. I mean, that is a long time for those businesses to have been there. And, you know, it's something to be, no, I think I'm going to ask Gene, once he gets closed down, if he'll come down to the council meeting. And I'd like to present him with a proclamation of appreciation and thanks on behalf of the city council for their good efforts. Because, you know, they've been a quality business and it's compliments, it's never complaints about how they do it or how they install it or what they charge there or whatever. So it's, in some respects, when he told me, I said, well, this is kind of the sad day in the history of Batavia. But I wanted you guys all to know that unfortunately, it's just a time in life when they have to do it. And that's the way it's going to be. So with that being said, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion in second. Want to call?